Everybody's please stand. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce some of the media that probably know. Will Davis. Will is a pastor of Hot House Baptist Church. About four or five months. Of course, Will's grandpa is a living legend here in the courthouse. Wendell Davis. Been the tax commissioner for over forty years. We said somewhere right around there. Wendell's told me a lot of stories about that. But we're very happy for the wealth for you to be here and let's start us out in prayer. And Vincent and Crystal's your mom and dad. And been over there, like I say, in their blood forever, haven't you? The Davis clan is famous in Fannie County. But we're glad to have you with this mic or you can just use that mic right there.
I just want to say too, thank y'all for having me. Thank God for each of y'all.
Your bakers, though.
Appreciate y'all. I was just saying, thank y'all for each and every one of y'all. I know it's a hard job being commissioners and truly promoting more, I think. Thank y'all. And thank y'all for the opportunity to come and pray. Let us at this time, let's go to our Lord and Savior in prayer. Father, we thank you, Lord, for all the mercy and grace that you've given to all the people that live on earth, Lord, that we have air to breathe and food to eat, Lord, and that yes, you shower all the good gifts from above. And we thank you for those, Lord. And what we pray today for each of these men here and each that's here at this meeting tonight, that you would build us up in unity as we are here today. And that our decisions and the things that we decide and deliberate about, Lord, that we would do it in light of your law, Lord, and of your truths and your word. That we would look to you in all things that we do, whatever it may be, Lord, that we would know and that we would rather fear you than to fear men. And always look to you, Lord, in your word and stand by it. Because it is the true truth that we may live by each and every day. We pray for these men as they are ministers unto you, Lord, as your word tells us, Lord, to deliberate and to decide. We praise you and we thank you for all that you've done, that you are the King of all creation, Lord, the Lord of all, all it is, and that you are the one that was and that is to come. Father, we pray for our country and for our nation at this time, for all the leaders, Lord, that they would look to you, look to your word, that your light would be spread abroad, Lord, into their hearts, that they may delight in your law, in your truths, Father. We pray for so many that are without. We know that there is hope in you, Lord, that we, those that are who are hopeless can have hope in you. Those that don't know where they could go or turn to, they can always turn and look to you, Lord, that you are all merciful King and Savior. And we just pray today, Lord, for each and every one of this community. There's so many, Lord, that work hard, Lord, and look to you and are faithful to you. And we just pray that you just bless this community, that we would continue to look to you in everything that we do. And because without you, we cannot stand, Lord. The United States cannot stand without you. We pray that we would not ever turn our backs on you, Father, that we would continually seek your face and look to you, Lord, and look to please you in all that we might do and may decide, Lord. And we pray that you would give us the courage, the strength, Lord, and the fortitude to be willing to stand when nobody else would stand, Lord, no matter what may be the cost, that we're willing to stand up for you. Lord, be men called by your name and by your purpose, Lord, to do your will. And I pray that, Lord, that your will would be done on earth as it is in heaven. Father, truly this day, we praise you, we thank you, we give you honor and glory. We pray all this in Jesus' holy name, the only name which any man may be saved by. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every day and justice for all.
Okay, gentlemen, number two on our unfinished business. We have a board discussion action on approval of the minutes for the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Patterson, any of the board commissioners have any minutes to agree?
No, sir. I have no, uh, talk with minutes.
Commissioner Searcy?
Uh, no, sir.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three regular scheduled board meeting. Ask for a second.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number three on our unfinished business. We have a board discussion action with Public Works Director Zach Ratcliffe on the warding of the bid on the fielding station. And as we noticed, it was taken from our previous meeting to allow us to wrap it, to look at the benches that come in.
We have done a lot of research on those things. I still. I say we've done a lot of research on these things and I think we've come to a conclusion where we need to be at. We're going to take the lower bid. It's with JF Petroleum Group, which is slash Lee Devonport is the guy that's over this petroleum group. Six, it's six hundred thousand, what was that, six hundred thousand, one seventy? Hi?
Six seventeen?
Yeah, six seventeen fifty. Seventy cents.
Let's see here, it looks like it's six hundred seventeen thousand, fifty dollars and seventy cents.
Yep.
When will construction start, sir?
He will, he will, I'll let him know in the morning and he will start ordering equipment immediately. I talked with him about that, just as a reference on, he's the guys, that company that did that, did the school system, system on there for buses. And I went to visit that and I talked with Dan, uh, Darren. And he's a great company, everything worked out just perfect. He just gave them the keys to the thing and they took it.
Where are they at then?
They live, they live Georgia. There it is.
So they've had their system about a year now, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
No issues or?
No issues, no.
What was the other bid?
Uh, it was from, uh, let's see here.
Smith, Smith Bill.
And it was seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
About a hundred and seventy.
And this is, this is exactly how you want it, right?
Yeah. I talked to him, I talked to him a couple times, yesterday and today, and yes. And he says if we get him, get him on the ground, he said he will try to save us even more and everything.
Same location as those?
Pretty much same location, will be a little bit down the driveway from where the other ones are. It will be, we'll be using the old one until the unit's complete. And he will take the old one now, far as that's part of the.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah.
The savings in a hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seventy cents.
And where's that coming out of?
It will come out of Spalss.
Okay. Commissioner Patterson?
I have no issues or concerns.
All right. And so I'll, I'll make a motion that we go with lower bid, six seventeen, zero fifty and seventy cents to JF Petroleum Group to replace the gas pumps over there at the Public Works. I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, our new business, number four is this board discussion action on variance request from Kerry Dodd to place a garage thirty-six feet from the road and forty-two feet from the center of the road. Is there anybody here that has formed this particular variance? Anyone here against it? Okay. All right, gentlemen, I went to, went over Wolf Creek there on Strickland Mountain to look at this. It appears that that's a pretty good distance. And I think Keith Nicholson, actually, when we went and measured it, actually it came out to be thirty-eight feet, but he's asking thirty-six. But one reason been was that some of the fill lines was in behind where he was going to build that garage and that was about as far as he could go, so.
Right.
Any sort of senior discussion?
No, sir, after listening to Keith say that, it made sense. And I think that was the only place that he said it would work good, you know, so. I didn't, I didn't have a problem with it.
Commissioner Patterson?
I looked at it over there. It looks like it will work. It's a few, like I say, a few feet, but it's very close and he had his sign up and everything. So I don't have any concerns about it. I think it will be, be all right.
Okay. All right, and before the discussion, that being said, I'll ask for a motion to approve the variance request for Mr. Dodd.
I'll make the motion.
I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, number five. We have a board discussion action on the form of Corey Callahan of the Fannie County Development Authority Board. Mr. Callahan here, by chance? Any discussion on this?
I know Corey. Corey's a good man. You know, Community Bank, I don't, I don't see an issue. I think he will be a good addition to the Development Authority.
Dr. Ruth. All right, I believe you would be as well. And obviously, the Development Authority, they, they had no issues with it either. Always try to, like, to talk to the boards that we deal with because we never want to have one there fighting each other, so. Well, that being said, I'll make a motion to appoint Corey Callahan of the Fannie County Development Authority Board and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number six. We have more discussion action on the MOU between the Fannie County Board of Commissioners and the North Georgia Community Action, which is also known as MATS here in Fannie County. We know they provide a pretty valuable service to this county and we see a lot of the vehicles out here running at a rate now, so. If anybody would like for me to read this, I'd be glad to. Show of hands. There will be a copy if anybody wants to read it, we'll get you a copy there for sure. So I think this is our annual, basically it's an annual renewal with the MOU with MATS, so. Any discussion, Commissioner Patterson?
I have none.
Commissioner Searcy?
Uh, no. On that page though, is that where it says total expenses?
Yes.
That increase right there, is that?
Yep, the increase. That's what we're going to get to before we vote it. So if you'll, if you'll notice on that, there was an increase on that. Vehicle insurance, obviously that went up. Maintenance and repairs of the vehicles, I think that went up as these vehicles were starting to age.
And drivers.
And the drivers. And I think with services they're providing, they're looking at adding an additional driver.
Okay.
Other administrative fees, administrative fees went up. They did reduce some office supplies and had a pretty big reduction in the telephone, which obviously I'm not going to be joking about this, you know, make me driving at all the same time, right?
Yeah, that's a good thought.
I'm just kidding. So.
No, I have a problem, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask about that increase.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That being said, I'll ask for a motion to approve the MOU with MATS.
Uh, make the motion.
I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number seven. Here's a board discussion action with the Fannie County Water Authority Chairman Anita Weaver regarding water authority project. Ms. Weaver?
Thank y'all. The Fannie County Water Authority has a very large project coming up. We will be going from Dry Branch Road up Aska into the Campbell Camp subdivision. There is around fifty homes in there. And of course, also there is some property in there where people are not able to build due to the fact of not being able to have county water. The total project is roughly one million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you know, cost has gone up tremendously on all of our materials. So we're asking for a little bit of help from the county. We have several other projects also, but this is our main one that we are asking for some help for at the present time.
And how many customers is this going to give you there?
Roughly around fifty. I have been contacted by Shannon from the Fannie County Health Department. There is a small subdivision right before you get into Campbell Camp. It's called Valcito Subdivision. They have a well that is failing at the present time. So I am in the process of talking with them also. I do not have a cost estimate of that. They've not even gotten any commitments from that subdivision.
But this will help you though?
This will help tremendously. This.
And it'll help people?
Help a lot of people. And roughly, there's around fifty homes in there at the present time. And I do know of several pieces of property. One gentleman owns some property and he feels like that he can put four to five homes in there if he had the county water. So there would be more as we got into the project.
You've done good. You've done good, you and your board really, done real well with this.
Well, thank you.
Ms. Weaver, you want to address the handout a little bit?
As you can see, it's on this map, it does not reference all of the homes that are in this subdivision. Once you go on Q public, you can see where all of them are at. But our cost has gone up so much. Pipe, when I first started dealing with the Water Authority, was around seven dollars to ten dollars a foot. Now it's ranging around forty to fifty dollars a foot.
Oh, man.
So roughly, and the estimate that our engineers have prepared for this is one million, four hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars just to go from Dry Branch up Aska into Campbell Camp. And that would be include the meters who can, the meters to the people that want to do it and everything like that. We would be able to do fire flow. I'm not sure exactly how far the fire flow would go into it, but we would be able to do fire flow into most of Campbell Camp.
Would it help out a bunch?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, would it? Would the fire department?
Yes, sir, it would.
Sure help out with that as over it too, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir, it would.
And you can keep us up to date, up to date on all of them?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay. So you're needing us to help you, I guess?
Yes, sir. I was hoping for around seven hundred and fifty thousand.
That's about half a project.
Yes, sir, it is.
It's like not coming in management for a point five.
I could ask for more if you want me to. I'll just stick with that figure for the time being.
Would that help your desire?
It would help tremendously. It really would. Because like I said, we have some more projects that are coming on board and we want to do as much as we can. And with that seven fifty, it would really help us, be able to do a lot of projects.
Which one could we do to our?
How to augment it, yes.
Something getting in, back when that was originally.
It was originally, that was one of the major expenditure items for our development infrastructure water systems.
That's getting it to our people.
Yeah, it is. It's helping, helping a bigger situation.
It is, it, because the fire department, the I O S members, it can help with a lot of things. And there's a lot of people out there that really need county water.
But will they sign up for county water?
Oh, yes, sir.
Or will they stay with their well?
We've already gotten the commitments now since we started this.
And then you say there's another subdivision out there. That's a possibility that, I mean, you haven't talked to them yet.
I just received an email from Shannon from the Health Department about the Valcito subdivision. There's around twenty-two homes in that small development there. And their well is failing. And EPD has told them they're going to have to do something. I have contacted the homeowners association and I hope to meet with them next week and talk to them about this and see what we can help them with. There is two homes being built in there at the present time. And they are refusing to let that gentleman hook up to their well due to some issues that they have. So he's kind of, doesn't know what he's going to do at the present time. So I'm hoping that I can convince them that they need to go in with the county water.
And we have no issue with water supply?
No, sir, we do not. Because we have plenty of supply through the city of Blue Ridge, there's no issue whatsoever.
We're their largest customer then, ain't we?
Uh, yes, sir, we are.
Okay.
But we don't not even, they allot us a hundred and fifty thousand gallons and we don't even come close to that amount at the present time.
Potential, lower safety homes.
Yes, sir.
Also.
That's our.
But they are defended, are defended.
Well, I think we have to help the Water Authority, huh? I think by making a suggestion or whatever I'm supposed to do.
We'll ask for one.
Huh?
We will.
Okay.
I was going to do. I'll ask for a motion. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Patterson?
I, I'm not.
All right. I'll ask for a motion that we help the Water Authority out by giving them seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Arbor Funds for what we call the Campbell Camp project.
Yes, sir.
I'll ask for that motion?
Uh, I'll make it up.
I'll go ahead and ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the work you did.
Thank you.
Stop by the toll booth on the way out.
Okay, I will.
All right, so number eight. We have more discussion action with Public Works Director Zach Ratcliffe. Once again, for the opening of the L-Meag bid for Aska Road in purchase of a vehicle.
You hard, you man, now.
What are you going to do first?
We'll do the first one we received, Barto Paving Company Incorporated. He's out of Cartersville, Georgia, and it arrived this morning and on July eleventh, the eight-twenty. Was due by two o'clock. Well, actually, you're not going to use that.
Who was out front?
Barto Paving Company Incorporated, out of Cartersville, Georgia.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Just got to read.
All right, so we have, uh.
That, now that, from Harmony Hall way in.
Okay, for Aska Road, the length being fifty-four thousand feet, approximately twenty-five feet in width, and approximate tonnage. The unit price is two thirty-seven for a total price of three million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand and four hundred dollars.
How much was it?
Eight, not by the half, nine miles.
And it looks like he has various certificates. And the second bid that we received was from Johnson Paving LLC, out of Blue Ridge, Georgia. We received that today at one twenty-four. Same for Aska Road project, same length and feet, fifty-four thousand, approximately twenty-five feet wide, fourteen, two hundred tonnage. Unit price at one thirty-two fifty for a total price of one million, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and, I'm sorry, one million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And he has the step on, power of attorney, and his affidavit, and his weapon.
So we're looking at one million, eight hundred for that one, right?
One million, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, or I'm sorry, one million, eight hundred, eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
I think that one was three.
Three, three million.
I should be clear over there.
Everyone was.
Pretty good difference.
Yeah, can leave you there before, and I'm, I'm very confident that we're, we're good.
You're good.
Yes. It goes far, it goes far beyond, so we're good.
Okay, it was nice.
Oh, but it is nice.
Is that the only two?
That's the only two, we just say two, yeah.
Okay.
Do you feel like you may look this, so I like yours?
It's answered, everything is right there, so it's in a pack, so I think you're good. If you want me to, I can, but I think everything right there.
When, when can you get started on?
Hang on just a minute.
Uh, no, we, obviously we'll coordinate with Mr. Ratcliffe to make sure we meet the scheduling expectation. As outlined in the bid package, it should be completed within a period of approximately sixty days. You know, sometimes there could be weather related issues. I mean, you know, right now, probably looks likely we'd be starting sometime in August. But, you know, we want to work closely with Mr. Ratcliffe to make sure the timing works good for the other projects or, you know, goings on in the area too. But certainly, very well put to get it done well before anything approaching cold weather.
It is.
I just have to say, well, yeah.
And this, and this comes out, you're.
That's Spalss and L-Meag. This is the state, yeah.
So it gives.
L-Meag is the state funded money that we get from the state. I think it was seven hundred and.
Thirty-nine or forty-nine thousand, somewhere in that figure, yeah.
So state's, state's taking the biggest line of this, pretty much, but.
State's, state's taking the biggest lot of this pretty much, but.
And the remainder of that comes out of splash, which bank pays the Reds.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Now, uh, we needed to, I think we talked a little bit last time, what about the marking?
That will come, that'll come later, I can, I can do, I'll do that at a different time. I give them, uh, they'll, they'll put that mix down, give you thirty days, it'll be a temporary marking. Give them thirty days, let that thing cure up, get so we don't lose the paint, and we're good to go.
We'll get that, we'll get that down before winter.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Get there.
Yeah, yeah, that's my problem. Okay, I'll be, I'll be with you, I mean, that's making a life savings.
Yep.
Yeah, pretty good.
Please.
Yeah.
You know that Earl does a good job.
Right. We've been pleased with what we've done with us so far. He has worked it down, he's, he's went far beyond, I mean, he's, he's helped me a lot, that's.
What's another thing I'll mention, just, just to do such a large spread, you know, uh, you know, excuse me, is, um, we were actually at the same unit price as last year, exactly the same unit price, but we actually were able to realize a lower mixed price. So, uh, you know, even though there's a huge spread, I can't certainly account for that kind of spread, but, uh, just to give the board a little more, uh, you know, a good feeling, we are exactly the same unit price as we did the, the work in Kukane with a cheaper mix and a better haul.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Well, gentlemen, that being said, if there's no more discussion, um, I'll make a motion that we go with a little bid, Johnson Paving for one million, eight hundred, eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And ask for a second.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Uh.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
And also wanna make sure we put on our bid paid for out of splash.
Mark, watch the hell, babe.
All right.
That it?
For the finale.
For now? Finale.
You know, we've been kinda, we're trying to upgrade our fleet, as you guys know, we're trying to get, we're trying to get there. Do you remember when we first, I'll go through this field, you know, when we first come out there. My trucks sat on the back of a road back more than they did on the road, so we're getting out of that, and, and it's, we're doing a good job of it. We still got a little ways to go. Uh, we've been, Jamie, I've been telling Jamie, we've been looking for trucks and they're hard to find, I mean, you, without just, you know, picking, like, it's almost like calls. It's not just exactly what you want. So, uh, this gentleman had this truck for sale, he called Jamie up and he asked for it also. And it's a twenty eighteen with sixty-eight thousand miles. Uh, that truck probably, out on the open market, would probably go anywhere between fifty, fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars. He's asking forty-four. Uh, I'm, I'm, Jamie and I drove it, it, it's, it's, if I didn't have the truck I have, I'd probably buy it. But, uh, it's, it's a damn truck.
Is this for the crew?
It would be for the crew, if, if that's what we can find a place for it, we will, yeah.
Was it, well, tell me about the truck, is it a, just a pickup cab, board over?
Uh, four-wheel drive, two, uh, F two fifty.
Okay.
And, uh, it is a Lyra.
Okay, and it's an eighteen?
Yep, sixty, I think it's about sixty-eight thousand miles or something like that. It's a gas burner, which is, which is a couple of those.
Yeah. Okay, uh. Who are we buying it from?
Tell. Wait, it's, um.
Dagger?
Uh, yeah, they're in Lakeford.
Yeah.
They're in Lakeford. He owns a, he, what, what the story is, he owns a company that does, uh, what you call it, uh, pesticide? Yeah, exterminant. Exterminant, I get you, right. And he bought it for that job, and he does the cabins, so of course, he can't turn it around in that big truck, and these are small cabins. So he drove it as far as he could stand, and he was a small trucker, so it's been set for, um, for a while.
And you and Jamie both drove this?
Oh, yeah, well, I did. I did, Joe, sure. Cause I did. Yeah. But he did, they did, they did drive out of the way.
Okay, and this is gonna help your fleet?
Oh, yes, no question, we're getting, we're getting it down there, you know, to some pretty good stuff, and we still got some junk out there that's.
And you're getting rid of the junk?
Well, we're, we are, yeah.
What do you normally do?
You have to auction it off.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and this'll come out of splash?
Correct. Splash, yes. I, I just, uh, I've seen some other trucks out here, and it, like I said, it wasn't what we wanted in a truck. And, uh, it just, I, I just don't see it spending good money on something, but it couldn't be used for.
This is forty thousand?
Yeah.
Cause I do know that those trucks were like sixty, sixty-eight, seventy thousand dollars.
Mostly, but it come out of the truck.
And only sixty-eight thousand miles, it's gotta be easy miles for a two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
It's probably still a lot.
No.
That's, uh.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I was four, five years old, it was over sixty-eight thousand miles, it'd be good.
So just, just kinda put that in perspective as well, you know, we, we, we did find one, one brand new truck, uh, two-door, four-wheel drive, script-down version, uh, for just under forty-four thousand. And, and this is a F two fifty, the one, one I'm talking about was F one fifty, the one I'm looking at now was F two.
That's a word truck, though, right?
It is?
Yeah.
Four mats, five seats and stuff.
Well, it's four door, you got a crick in it, yeah.
This, yeah. Any discussion on the gentleman for?
All right, man.
All right. So I'll ask for a motion that, uh, we approve the purchase of this two thousand and eighteen F two fifty, uh, for forty thousand dollars to be paid for in a splash, I'll ask for that motion?
Make a motion.
I'll ask for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Thanks, guys, appreciate that. All right, uh, last item for bid, on the agenda. Uh, it's board action, uh, discussion on Phantom County Library M O U and request for proposal. So gentlemen, as you know, last, uh, meeting, we, uh, we voted on to approve the M O U that was agreed on verbally with the Mount Regional Library. They agreed on it verbally, we voted on it. And they actually had a call meeting yesterday and approved themselves that M O U. Uh, so tonight, what I would like to, uh, try to, um, is to go ahead and, uh, uh, vote on putting out the R F P. I know we still have a little bit of work to do on that. Um, my hope is that we have it done before the next meeting. And, um, I would like to go ahead and vote on that tonight, that way if it is done before, we don't have to come to another meeting to actually vote on that, to put it out, if that's a possibility.
Mr. Chairman, I think probably for the sake of the audience, we probably spell out what those R F Ps and M O Us, what they, what, what they really stand for.
So the. The M O U is a memorandum of understanding, and, and what that does, it allows us to go into a, a joint effort, if you will, wherever, uh, uh, all entities are in agreement on how the word is and who's responsible for what, what's responsible for who, and things like that. Uh, the, the R F P is a, is a request for proposal, uh, which we would put that out for bid. Um, and also, just like we've done tonight, we can get those bids in and, and open up in a, a public meeting and, uh, go through, obviously to make sure everything is, um, good, and then award that bid, so, um.
It's a part of the process.
Part of the process.
Taking it step by step.
Yeah. It is, so, um, again, our, our goal is to have the R F P done before the next meeting. Um, if you guys are in agreement tonight, we can go ahead and vote on that. And as quick as that thing is done, we can go ahead and put it out there for, um, for bid, so.
Do you have a anticipated time when you would like to start the work?
That I'd like to start? Yeah.
Today?
Uh.
I mean, I mean, estimated time, uh, approximate?
So, our, I would love, um, if, if we could get this, and I think it's, the bid's gotta be up for thirty days, if I'm not mistaken by their standards. The bid's gotta be up for thirty days, so if we can get this done, um, and get it out, we would, there, there's an opportunity that we can have it in by the end of August, um, and award the bid the first of September. So my, my hope would be that we could start doing something by the end of September. But that is, that is, uh, a goal, and I really believe it's a realistic goal if we, if we continue to push forward and make this happen.
Get these process steps.
Yeah.
Paperwork. All right, it sounds good to me.
All right, so that being said, I'll ask for that motion to go ahead and, uh, approve to put out the R F P and ask for a second.
A second.
I'm sorry, I'll ask for that motion first, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Now I'll ask for that second.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. So that brings us to public commentary, uh, anybody like to come and speak, come on up to the podium, tell us who you are and where you're from, and we'll go from there. Ian?
I got something, nobody else?
Come on, man? Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm, I'm a little late on this one, uh, regarding the short-term rental laws y'all looking to put in. Um, I didn't find out about it till it come out in the paper, and, but I did go back and watch, uh, videos of the meetings. Um, and I, I come out, I got a love-hate relationship with it. I've, I've got a house, it's my house that I rent out, and I live by one that's rented out. And, you know, I, the money is good, but the hassle a lot of times ain't worth it, sometimes it ain't worth it. Um, the only issue, and I, and I sympathize, I, the, the gentleman that talked about fifteen cars being parked in the road and blocking stuff, like, there's clearly problems that have to be addressed. The only thing that bothered me was, uh, under section eleven A subsection I for the suspensions and revocations. Um, it says, if the property or the certificate holder, local point of contact, property owner, or occupants or guests have three violations in a twelve-month period, you can lose the certificate to rent. So I've had situations where, you know, I tell people what the rules are. I've had people, they show up when I'm there, they show up early, and I say, hey, here's the deal, I know it don't look like I have neighbors, cause you can't see them, but noise carries a long way in the mountains, and I've got neighbors, they're my cousins, they're gonna call me if y'all act up. Like, you can't blast music, you can't shoot fireworks off, you can't, you know, blah, 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 or oh, yeah, blah, blah, blah. And then I, I'm getting calls at eleven o'clock at night, they're blasting music, or they're shooting fireworks off. And it's a, it's a pain in the butt. Um, Airbnb, in my personal opinion, is kinda like dealing with the devil, I don't like them, but that's where the people are. I, I try to just do B R B O and some of the others, and you just don't get the bookings that you do on Airbnb.
What do you do when you get those calls?
Well, it depends on the situation, because I, I've only got a, uh, I've only got three neighbors, and I've related all of them. And it depends on what they want me to do, I've had times where, uh, I told them, I'll go there right now. And they, my, my, my neighbor says, don't do it, because there's twelve of them over there, and I can tell you're mad, and, you know, just, you know, whatever, talk to them in the morning or something. Um.
So you let them carry on throughout the?
No, no, I'll send them a message, and I'll, and I, and I, what I normally do, I've got a, another cousin that's got a better equipment than me, and he's good at handling stuff. Uh, my problem is it's my house that I built, so when they damage stuff, I get extra, man. It's not just some investment property or something. Uh, but my, my problem is, if they know the rules and I tell them the rules, and they still don't follow the rules, and that happens three times in twelve months, well, I can lose my right to rent. And my point would be, if somebody's doing something wrong, like, let's say this hotel downtown, if people rent a room there and they park in a handicap parking spot, or they do something they shouldn't do out here in front of the hotel, they get a ticket, they don't go to the hotel, say, hey, we're finding you money, and if this keeps acting up.
But that's different.
Well, the other part of that, that is, is if they're acting up in the room, they're asked to leave.
Right.
So, I mean, is that an option that you might have?
Well, that, I, I, I probably will need to talk to a lawyer, I've talked to people, and I've never got a straight answer about where can you kick somebody out, if, or what behavior, because if they paid for it, there's, from what I understand, there's a lot gray area on that.
I think.
Excuse me. And if y'all know how to kick them out when they're acting up, tell them.
Let me, let me put it to you this way, if, if I, I think as commission, I'm not speaking for these gentlemen, but they, and what this board is doing is this, uh, we're trying to keep, uh, our residents here have the right. They live here, this is your home.
Yeah.
You have the right to enjoy your home and have peace and quiet and safety and all that.
I agree a hundred percent.
And we're here to represent you for that, that's why people elected us, so, but I'm telling you now, if I had your place and the county officials up here, we're getting ready to, uh, this is a, this is a suggestion, basically. What we're doing is taking these suggestions like, and then we'll total this up, and then we're gonna try to come up with, hopefully it'll be a perfect plan, but nothing's ever perfect.
Right.
But the thing about it is, is this, when you come in and you rent my place, you'll be able to come up here, I hope that we did it this way, and get a, a set of the, of the ordinances or rules or whatever you wanna call it, to what we're getting ready to do. And then when you come in, you're, where I'm gonna hand you these pieces of paper and say, this is the county ordinances.
Right.
Now, you need to sign this paper for me, saying that you know this is personal, now, this ain't got nothing to do with government, this got to do with me. So I'm gonna protect myself, so here, here's your package that you're gonna have to rent my place. Now, if you get out of line and break this thing and the law comes, or if I get my calls, you just violated these laws or these ordinances or whatever these stipulations are, what they're called. Cause they signed the papers, say that to help you, I would say, your liability part.
Right, puts the people into it.
Yes, that, that's put, yes, because you have an obligation, when you come up here, or if I do it, uh, and buy a permit to say I'm gonna rent something, or I'm gonna be licensed to do this, which I'm not, but you're doing it, so you gotta have this to protect yourself, that's just for your own. But the county, our job up here is to protect you and all these other people that live here, that's our obligation.
Right.
And we're gonna set these rules with your suggestions, of course, but once we put this package together, then everybody that comes up here and wants to come to beautiful Blue Ridge and stay, and go on our lakes or whatever, or zip lines or rivers, they're gonna know when they stay in a cabin or Airbnb or whatever they are, what the rules are.
Right.
So it's gonna benefit all of us, I feel. So that's just my, my part to you as far as along for you, officer. And right there, said someone. So I gotta protect him too, and give him something to go out here and say, hey, you signed this paper.
And that's what I've heard, is people that have called the law, when people are partying or being loud, the law comes out, but they, all, basically all they do is tell them, you gotta turn the music down, or, you know, whatever.
Well, they do.
And then they, they, if it's a rough group, it's a rough group, but it ain't like you can always run them out. But the, the only thing I'm saying is, if in the case of, if a, a, a person who owns the rental, if they say, I've only got parking spots for three cars, and twelve cars come up, then I feel like those nine cars ought to get a ticket or be towed.
That ordinance will come into play.
Here's that file you, I just gave you, don't, don't have, this ain't a party.
But, and, and, and I do wanna say for context, I've had one bad group this whole year. I had one bad group the whole, uh, twenty twenty-two, so it's not a non-stop, you know, something like that. It's literally been once per year, but I would just like to see where, now, if there's an owner that says, hey, bring twelve cars up, and they don't have room for twelve, then I think the owner should get a ticket for a fine.
Well, see, it's our job, though, once we set these things out, and it's just like to make his job a lot easier when he answers these calls. It's our job to put this, to, to put this together on these things, like how many, you do that when you go to a campground. That's federal, that's federal, uh, reserve, that's, you know, federal law, I mean, federal land. So they have their stipulations, we're basically doing the same, I think, but you, you have to, you're now. So they have their stipulations, we're basically doing the same, I think, but you, you have to, you're the owner of the property.
Right.
You know, you've gotta, you know, you've gotta do your part too, I mean, we're giving you something to help you do your part. So, and if they're not doing their part, that's why they got nine-one-one, I mean, call the law, I mean, but, you know, we gotta work together.
The way I read the proposal, I can call the law, and if they're acting up and showing their butts, that could still be a strike on me, even if I give them the.
They're not, they're not, now, man, I mean, listen, I've answered thousands of calls, just because you've got somebody acting like an idiot somewhere, it's not the owner's fault, the fault that this guy, he didn't, you know, I'm letting you come up here and stay on my land, I'm taking your money, just like they said. It ain't my fault if you're crazy.
Right.
You know, and he's gonna haul you to jail.
Well, so, just for clarification.
And he knows, he knows, he's gonna, he knows what, who to, who to put down, uh, that's doing this, it's not the owner. But now, if you do this continuously, and you're the one that's having all these issues all the time.
Right.
And somebody, somebody, somebody's not working it together.
Right. I, I'm in full agreement, and just to clarify, as it reads, it says, if the guest break the ordinance, if the guest three times in twelve months, you can lose it.
That says guest, that didn't say owner.
So, here, here.
But the, but the owner would lose the right to rent if the guest do three.
If it was the same guest, yeah.
Well, that's not what this says.
So here's, here's the thing, so it's still a work in progress, all right, and there's nothing in stone right there, again, like he said, we're trying to get it as close to perfect, cause there ain't nothing perfect. There wasn't one time. Left us for a little bit of time here. But I, I will say this, we're trying to get it as close.
To perfect.
To, to perfect as possible, as an ordinance can get. We're also trying to give these gentlemen here, that where that can get for them, a little more teeth in it, and also, just like he said, it gives you a little more teeth, so.
And I'm all for that.
And, and different things, so if you go out there and you try to calm it down, obviously, let, cooler heads prevail, I, I still gotta work on that, we said.
And I've done it before, and they're so drunk, it's like sleeping on a horse.
So you, you've done everything that you possibly can, okay? And and we, there, there may be some wording in there that we do need to change. We'll get back with Miss Jackson tomorrow, let her know your concerns, you can watch the, the video as well, and and we'll, we'll try to address that. Um, but, but just like you said, I, I've still gotta be responsible for, for my.
Property.
Right. Even though somebody else might use it, I've still got a, a little, I've got a little responsibility there as to.
I agree.
And, uh, we're not trying to run anybody out of business, uh, we're just trying to make it, make it feasible for everybody.
And and one of the thing, last thing I'd say is a concern is, I don't, I got confidence in y'all, and I got confidence in what you're trying to do, and I got confidence that you're gonna do the best you can do. But if the letter of the law says that, well, we can go after you if it happens three times in twelve months, maybe year, five years, ten years down the road, maybe we've got new commissioners, that they ain't following the spirit of what y'all are trying to do. Maybe they got a new angle, and they say, well, the letter of the law is this, we can, you know, so I, it, it's just that one wording and that one little sentence.
We're gonna make sure of that, we're, we're gonna do, like you said, we're trying to get it as, but, we got attorneys working on this, not one. We got attorneys working on this, we want it to be right, we want our people to be safe. Uh, we want, we want our law enforcement to have the, what they need, but keep them safe, we wanna protect you. Uh, and we want people to have a good time, but you're not gonna come up here, and, and we're not, we're not much, uh, we're gonna make sure that, that it's right, you know what I'm saying? We're gonna help you, man, but you gotta help us too.
I'm more.
It's all teamwork here, you know, everybody's gotta work together in this situation to resolve it.
I've wrote, done everything you said right here, you know, the sections, everything, the will, I'll jump on that tomorrow, and, well, do it right now, but after work, if you'll hang around, just give me a phone up, Ralph, call me.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't have a dog in this fight.
Yeah, you do, you carry a bite.
But it looks to me like when they sign a contract to rent a place, that, that, it's in there, and look here, if you get unruly, you can be thrown out without your money being returned to you.
Right.
If, if you wanna be a butthole, then guess what, buttholes go down the road.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously.
You, you gotta have stipulations like that to protect yourself.
Well, well, I do, and the, the biggest problem is, like I say, Airbnb oftentimes will give them their money back. They will literally take the money out of your account and give it back, so then, now, they stay there three days for free, and and made a mess and caused problems, and it's, it's, it's a good, well, you, you can.
Hey, and I'll, I'll say this, and I'm, I'm gonna get in trouble for saying it, but, I mean, you, if Airbnb is doing that to you, and you're doing everything right, you may look at a different management company, if I'm not happy with my insurance, I'm gonna shop around and see what's out there for better insurance or better coverage, and and that may be something that you, that you really dive into, cause there, there are different management companies out there, and if you, if you, you know, saw the, the first meeting, you know there's several, cause they were, uh, that was the majority.
The Airbnb, that's the online platform, where the, they basically act as third-party, letting the guests and the hosts, you know.
Well, they got their money, but you got.
Oh, yeah, they don't refund their money.
And that's, that's, that's something that you, you may look into, and obviously, I'm not.
I've done.
Trying to sway you one way or another.
I, I've looked at multiple times, and then, it's, it's like, say, it's kind of a deal with the devil, cause that's, that's just where most of the people are nowadays, that's looking to rent.
I got you, I got you.
Of course.
I'll get you number four, Lee.
May I ask something?
Yeah.
If you, and I, I know I've dealt with Airbnb myself, and there are certain options in the, in the agreement where you can set your own, like, I think there's three agreements where you can set your refund. I know I had a couple of problems with a couple of renters, and I would call them and let them know that I was having issues. Well, they would actually be proactive on my behalf and call that guest, and they would actually take care of that, they would let them know that I was asking them to leave. Or if, if somebody came into my house, they didn't like it or whatever, they would call me and be proactive in that category also. Uh, but there are certain options on there where you can pick your refund amount, no refund, half a refund, or a twenty-four-hour cancellation notice. You just have to be proactive with that platform and that, and just research it.
Or emergency cut, you know?
Yeah, that'd be the only way, cause everything else, no refunds.
And I'm not taking up for them, they do have their downfalls too, but I just know I had a couple of issues that I could call them with, so, and they were pretty good about helping with that.
All right, anyone else? That being said, we'll close public commentary, um, gentlemen, that brings us to executive session. I have no need for executive session, do you? Nope.
Man, that's twice you done that.
Doesn't do you truly need.
No, I don't wanna go now, you couldn't beg me to go.
That being said, I'll, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
All in favor?